Captain Truitt.
I know you'll.
Leader fun ball, all families. Everybody's getting ready for the year.
How many teams got?
So we filled out it himself.
Oh, yeah.
I should have done that. I think better be.
Not a lead in the floor.
No, no problem. Yeah.
Okay. Good. As long as I can get home for dinner.
If we can, if we can speed your group up, we'll be fine. We have nowhere to go.
Just don't hang up at the bus stop.
This is my, um, I hear that call, probably the bus stop. Probably.
It is the three days. We're hoping, yeah, we're hoping they are still.
They are.
They are still playing. I don't think, I don't think.
The football one is starting to buy. I don't think we're too careful. Yeah, we were first forty, short on three more seconds. And one and three.
Really?
No way.
How many did they only take? Forty? Forty, so we're at thirty-seven point eight seven. And it still took.
iPhone.
The H factor. What's going on?
I'm not you. And I do say incorrected, I'm talking to our county clerk, GLTA did not put anything out there.
They didn't.
Okay.
Oh, only four, only four. Oh, six, four, only four.
Library, we did. I think your library was dropping a lot of.
That's way back. The library one is that.
Yeah, the library is GLTA is not, they worry about.
Good evening, the local community school board of education is not called to order. We will begin with a pledge of allegiance. Mrs. McCallum, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the reformed and reformed stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. McCallum. So I have a comment card here. So a board meeting is a meeting of school district business held in public. It's not a public meeting. The board is not going to respond to those making public comments, but will direct the superintendent to follow up with the presenter. Thirty minutes is set aside for public comments, so each governor is being asked to keep their comments brief. The board does not comment in public on any student or employee and asks the presenter to be respectful of any person they comment about. Heather Tesler?
Hi, I'm Heather Tesler, and I just have a question if maybe it can be made more aware to me. It's about discipline at the schools. My daughter was just involved in some bullying and some threats against her life. And I don't understand because this, this individual was only given like two days suspension. And I guess I'm not sure of how, like what makes the final say of discipline because I have two sons that got in some trouble in school and their punishments were way severe and harsh. My daughter is ready to come back to school and with well-known remains. And I guess I'm just trying to find out how do you guys decide what, what punishment and disciplines fits the individual's crime that they done? So I mean, if you guys could address that for me, I would appreciate it. It also would probably make my daughter feel safer to go back to school. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good to have her.
Okay, that concludes our public comment for this evening. We will head into our reports. Mr. Hegdon, would you please share with us the finance operations committee report?
Absolutely. We met on May 16th, Lisa Novak, Summer Putnam, myself, along with Margaret Rader and Mary Moss. The meeting was called over at 3:00 PM via Zoom. We had one topic was the budget discussion. Margaret Rader updated the committee on the budget development. Even though there are no updates at this time, we reviewed the possible scenarios and how the changes would affect the budget. Updated information will be available once the state revenue conference dates place on the 20th. So I'm sure we'll hear about that tonight. And the initial budget will be given to the full board tonight and budget approval will be made at the June 22nd board meeting. We adjourned at 3:41.
Thank you, Mr. Hegdon. Any questions or comments? Thank you. So at this time for our presentation, I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Logan.
So thank you, Madam President. My pleasure to introduce this to the intended Margaret Rader to give us our second budget development meeting. The 2223 forecast. Only have two hours, so you better start. It's pretty late for this call.
Yeah.
Maybe he's got more videos.
God. It's an hour a page, so.
No, I'm gonna try to ensure. I could go live for a long time, man. Actually, it's good news. One revision though to the revenue report, yes, when we talked in the subcommittee about some budget numbers and I'll talk about it later. There was, although that Danielle's been launched since January, so there's been a lot of number crunching. Really, this year's probably different, not just because of her absence, but because of the Cessar dollars, the late revenue conference, which was after our finance ops. A lot of good information, lots of money. That's the problem, there's lots of money. People like to argue over lots of money. Now, that's a good thing because we, for my twenty-three years since property in 1994, we've always been asking for more money for schools. So we finally have. So I'm gonna go through it. Talk about the budget, the finance committee saw revised budget for this year, just posted numbers in print because there's lots of pieces in motion. Cessar grant dollars, eight million is a huge part of that. So I don't like putting numbers in print because then everyone remembers that number, even though it is revised two weeks later. Seven hundred thousand operating deficit for this year. We adopted, it's all on our website, so if you look at the original adopted budget from last year, it's one, one sixty million dollar operating deficit. Revision, you'll see when we bring it on the 22nd, it will be more than seventy thousand for this year. Why that's because we have an aggressive list of projects out of front balance besides the Cessar dollars. Some of those projects will occur, some can't occur because of timing and bids. Let me push to 23. So right now I'm working on adjusting all those numbers. Next year's numbers are looking, as we shared that day at finance ops, around 1.3 million dollar operating deficit. And you'll see when I get to later why it's grew is because of the assumptions we use with students and foundational allowance. Even though numbers are good, it's a declining enrollment district. That always is a challenge for us to make sure we get more money in state aid than others who are hoping we're wrong. So that'll get into the details of our interesting year that's gonna get even more interesting. So what we have in November, mid-election, we thought we had a school aid act before June. Not gonna have, most lobbyists have told us, we probably won't see a school aid act until July. Maybe even break just before they go to the campaign trail, the August primaries, before the vote. That's disappointing for us because you'll see here shortly, the amount of money out there, you'd think it's kind of a no-brainer. So what's the revenue consensus telling us? Lots of money. And here it is, lots of numbers, mumbo jumbo. But to simplify it, from the January reference, so the second line, estimating school aid fund revenue, sixteen billion in January. It grew to the name, few weeks ago, to almost twenty billion. Huge increase, huge increase. Uh, good news is at the bottom there, they have highlighted in yellow, which is the school aid fund, as well as the general fund, but I don't focus on the state's general fund, school aid fund. We have a five billion dollar balance sheet balance at the end of this year, which is September 30th of '22. We have a five million dollar balance at the end of September 30th of '23. That's great news. Question is, how are we gonna see that? Are we gonna see the governor suggest for the thirty-five dollars a student, the Senate four hundred and fifty, and the House three hundred? Those numbers support six hundred and forty-two plus dollars a student. Obviously, we know we're hard loss, we all want to be way over at the six hundred, right? Uh, the good news is that's coming, and then the bad news is, which you don't see because you put too many numbers on a slide, it gets lost, is when you start to look at fiscal '24 and fiscal '25, what is, what's going on? I want to pay attention to some of the new things, damn, I was quizzing. What happened about Newt today? The EU said they're going to boycott Russian oil. And a barrel of oil went to a hundred and twenty dollars a barrel at Newt today. Settle back to a hundred and fifteen at close at four o'clock. You wonder how I stay up at night looking at all these things. Well, I do somewhat. I do somewhat because it's important because our fuel budget, part of, back to why you're not seeing the numbers tonight. Our fuel budget is around three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. We passed that two months ago this year. And it keeps going. So at a hundred and twenty, living on our guessing last week, we paid, the month of May, we paid just shy of four dollars a gallon. We know already, May was four fifty, we're probably CDs over five. We're paying about forty to forty-five thousand dollars a month in just our bus fleet. You're talking a budget of about four fifty, five hundred thousand, five hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase that line in the month. So there's lots of stuff that I gotta pay attention to, to change, because even though the operating deficit is out there, there's bigger numbers now that are moving so fast with this economy. A few of them, we could end up being like Birmingham. Obviously, you know, hey, I don't wanna be known near the Birmingham where you make one or two bad assumptions. All of a sudden, you've got a big swing in your financial numbers. So it's good news, but it's good news that's cautioned. Here's the caution. So you gotta deep all these in these documents that I spent four and a half hours trying to build this from the revenue confidence. So you see in the fiscal '22 column, you see the green circle, eight percent. So their revenue projection is eight percent higher than they thought, 1.2 billion dollars. Which at 1.2 carries through for a couple of years, that's why they have a five billion dollar analyst for a couple of years. But you see where the concern starts to happen in fiscal '23. There's a contraction in the revenues for the school aid fund of, you know, a little less than one percent. Uh, it's not huge, a hundred and forty-five million dollars, not to hurt the school aid fund. But the trend of it coming back down, then you see for fiscal '24 going back to 1.5, which is really a normal growth. If you listen to economists and stuff, that's really where they're saying why we have inflation there. Because our economy's really not growing, it's growing at very checked amount. That check amount is at low one to two percent. They like to see the economy grow at three to four percent. That is concern because we have money, as you're gonna see in a few slides. If the Senate or the governor spend a couple of billion of that, all of a sudden, that five billion is gonna evaporate by the time we get to fiscal '24. So remember, we're always trying to figure out a couple of years ahead, besides the next fiscal year. That's where my caution concern comes in, is watching some of these numbers here that aren't clear on. So these, what's it all mean? Well, we've got again, you know, school aid fund is outpacing whatever logical person would have thought was gonna happen. Why is that? Sixty percent of the revenue school aid fund comes from what? Sales tax revenue. Sales tax revenue has gone through the roof since COVID with stimulus dollars, plus the economy keeps humming. Meaning, uh, the economy is defying the indicators of what's really operating. We see all inflation, we see the Fed raising the interest rate, right, about that two months ago. The problem is, we keep spending money. Well, one, they gotta spend money on fuel, they gotta spend money on food. And I was talking to a local farmer here in Springfield, fertilizer, Ukraine, everything has had a cause and effect. Seven thousand dollars last year for fertilizer, fifty-two thousand dollars this year, which is six hundred and sixty-eight year operation. So he's not a huge farmer, he's a good size. That's huge. We're gonna see that in food prices by the end of the summer. So you keep seeing all these inflationary items, and so, yes, the revenues are great. Income tax, income tax outpaced what the state ever imagined it was gonna be for 2021. Like his capital gains, people made a ton of money in '21. A lot of cash flow for capital gains. I think about twenty-five percent higher in capital gains than the state finance office that they got, than they predicted. Plus corporate income tax. So you got all these sources that are generating lots of money. Problem is gonna be, is where does it end? There's a slide coming up. And then where are the areas that our governor, our Senate, our House are funding from? There are five. I've never seen this in like thirty-three years. Basically, just still down their budgets into five major areas. Classroom supports, educated recruitment and retention. You can go on for that for a long time, but I don't know. Mental health, school safety, and other. And we all know, every one of those is bouncing as priority if they're all five at the same time. Other is there because that's retirement system, that's higher education, and a few things that you're gonna see that, you know, how do you pay attention of? The Senate, for instance, is using, wants to use five hundred and eighty-one million dollars of our school aid fund to pay the unfunded crew liability for the universities, so it's probably down to zero. So it takes us to 2036, you get the school aid for the teachers' pension down to zero. And we get the universities down to zero one year, six hundred million about the school aid fund. That's what concerns me. Don't pay attention to the numbers, try to read the numbers, and no, that doesn't like when I do this, but I wanted to do it as an example. Look on the left side, the executive, the governor. So you can see under classroom supports, just the volume of dollars and the amount under the subcategories of the grade in the left-hand column. You see the House in the middle. Has quite a few of those squares filled in with the dollars or less. You go to the far right, you see the Senate, and you see lots of blanks, it does not include or state. So we've got a, a huge disparity going on in the three school aid bills right now. So at the top, four thirty-five, governor, four fifty, Senate, three hundred, House. Typically, we pick for our budget, some are in between there. Well, we know there's an excess of six hundred, and then you can use six hundred this year and six hundred next year. We still have money left over. This is one of these years, I don't have an idea. I'm probably gonna pick the Senate, four fifty, and use it to run the numbers and see where they end up at. It's not the most conservative we usually do, but I think it's more indicative of where we're gonna see the per pupil allowance increase when it's all said and done in the dust settles. This gives you more of a flavor of that screen into what's the difference. So just take educated recruitment and retention. I asked Kim to come up here, she can go on for an hour, just about our struggles with all of our bargaining units, all of our positions, trying to attract, retain, and recruit. So the governor's got a huge problem, two billion. And you go to the far right, the Senate's got twenty-five million. And they're not even the same universe as to where their priorities are. And so I shared the five or six pages that really breaks this down. It gives you a flavor of the difference of the funding. Hence why all of us in the schools, there was just on the lister today, everyone asking what he uses for foundational allowance as districts are trying to prepare the final budgets here in the next week or two for adoption for next year. Everyone's struggling to figure out where we should be. We got a big workshop next Wednesday, Thursday will be interesting to hear where people are falling and if they really settle on this. School safety, you see the House, a lot more, a hundred for millions there. And so it's hard to give an idea of where they're going to fall because we don't hear anymore from Lancy. It's just a working subcommittee, and then the final bill come out, we voted. It's not like ten years ago, we'll leave here weekly, and where the debates are at. So it's kind of hard for us to use our numbers. So finally, here's some budget numbers. This is supposed to be, you're gonna see the budget numbers from me tonight. Per pupil increase, three hundred, four thirty-five, four fifty, six hundred, I just mentioned. FD projection, so our fall of '21 count was twenty-five sixty-one. That was the full-time equivalent, that was the audited number that we just received three weeks ago, four weeks ago, the audited numbers. We always use the fall projection, not our spring projection. And we're back to this ninety percent fall, ten percent previous spring. That forty-five hundred is about seventy students now, we've, we've fluctuated the last couple of years, we're on seventy-five. I did it, so it was around number for tonight, taking seventy down, seventy-one now, using forty-five hundred students as projection for fall count for us. And then using those predicted numbers, how much in new dollars have generated? And so as you go right to left, my left to right of the screen here, you see, oh boy, 1.9 to 2.7, we know the governor, Senate, and if the school aid balance sheet could produce six hundred dollars. But that could end in a decrease because you really gotta look at the net effect. So we start off down six hundred dollars. If I go back, I started here in fourteen, that number was in the one and a half to two million. We started one and a half to two million every year in the hole. So when you divide that by the remaining students, we were needing anywhere from four to five hundred dollars of foundation increase every year just to keep revenues the same, and it wasn't happening. Hence why we're doing cuts for so many of those years, and adjust our budget down. So go with the lobby, see the new dollars, net new dollars. Well, let me just use the House as an example, seven hundred and forty-one thousand. We already have, some of our bargaining units are settled for fiscal '22, '23. Uh, half of that's gone with increases at the department and settled already. Fuel's another hundred thousand. And before you know it, seven hundred thousand gone. Gone. So if I move to the governor, 1.3, still looks enticing. But we have so many other items that we're worried about of if things break. This year I've had to repair over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in water mains that are broken. Those are projects, they're not scheduled in the bond projects, so it's not something you schedule out, those are emergency repairs. Those kind of things are happening on a daily, sometimes weekly basis. And so 1.3 sounds like a lot, it gives us a little cushion, but it doesn't allow for a lot of growth. So I caution everyone, the numbers are positive, we're excited about that. But it's not a positive where we can get excited and just start putting things in the budget to spend. We're gonna have to be still very judicious about what we add to the budget. That's why I'm hoping we're further over to the right-hand side of that screen where it's four fifty or six hundred, so that we get a little bit of insulation. Remember I talked about this back in February? Why? What ends after next year in September? Covid dollars, right? Cessar, the bridge up here is act, Cessar two, Cessar three, all goes to September '23. Eight million, we spent about three and a half of it, so we've got quite a bit in fiscal '23 we might have spent out. We still had to sell for capital, but the capital keeps getting squeezed by the regulations. So I'm not convinced we're gonna be able to spend roughly a million, million and a half we have on paper for anything in capital because the state keeps changing the rules as we move forward from the beginning. So that's why I hope we're over here because once those Covid dollars end, we're gonna have interventionists, and Michelle can address this better than me, a number of folks that we have in those brains are gonna have to go back to the general fund or go away. So it's good, but it's cautious because that's what I'm working with the detail with too much, which you'll see on the thirteenth for the finance committee and the 22nd for the full board for approval, where we'll see where that flushes out, and that's why I'm gonna use that four fifty. Unless I get some better information in the next six days, next week, I'm gonna use the four fifty and see where it washes through. So talking about rolling numbers, skid budget, we're gonna go playing for a small decrease. Seventy-one, seventy-five-ish down to forty-five hundred. Yes, this year was anomaly, we went up fifty-two. That's the first time it's ever happened, even I think in that's ten, eleven years, even like eight years, that's never happened. So I'm caught that anomaly. We're gonna go still with our declining line because for the bond, we used Fred Nativich, he had, he did another projection. It still shows us on the, on the angle of a declining, we'll look at, we'll settle somewhere in the forty-four hundred around 2024, 25. So we're still on that path, nothing's really changed from that assumption. Cash flow is a big one. Cash flow is all depending on what the operating deficit be because I have to make sure that I've got insulation to cover cash in the summer of the late fall months when the state doesn't give us that twelfth state aid payment. If it's again, with the higher foundational allowance per pupil, we probably may be able to get away with the lowest borrowing down to two million. I'm guessing we'll probably still be in the three million or so when I'm all said and done, cash flow. So we'll still see cash flow on the 22nd for the general also. And then the Cessar two and three dollars, you know, we plan to have it all spent, probably ninety, ninety-five percent of it spent by September '23. You know, it's allowed to go to September '24. We're really planning on spending it in the first two years that was originally appropriated for. And then the last one I put out there, because who knows what's gonna go all of the election year politics with the dollars. Some of the monies, if you look at the House, the Senate, the Senate version wanted to pay about six hundred million into the retirement fund. The House wanted to pay about 1.2 billion into the retirement fund. So governor, House, Senate, all looking to use about two of that five billion fund balance or balance sheet balance in the school aid fund all in one year, fiscal '23. That number will change really quick based on the adopted budget. And all of a sudden, go from five hundred sprinted down to three million, or three billion. And then to hold that spending level, it's gonna be down to less than a billion in the following year. And so if we're having a recession, that's not a good spot to be. So there is concern. It's good money, but there's concern is where we're going with all this. Risk to the economy, consumer settlement, I already talked about, there's a disconnect, Michigan is showing it. I know I always say to you, Summer, because, you know, I watch the car sales, seventeen, seventeen and a half, eighteen is small. We're barely gonna break sixteen. And our proportion of that moving economy is a lot smaller than it used to be. Our state economy is still huge and dependent upon those revenues, that's a concern. It's shifting monetary policy, it's supposed to reserve the rates. Does anyone try to go high on that, that, does anyone try to go buy decking material to replace their deck? I post on my deck for the third year in a row that you can't find any materials unless you're willing to pay outrageous prices. You know, like three times we've been working for a pandemic. So the whole gas, food, supplier chain stuff is still working its way through. And then we got the pandemic, right? We go through these little waves, you think the structural versions are manageable. And then what showed up on the radar here a few weeks ago, I think, a month ago? Now we have another pandemic monkey box, right? It's not on this content, but it is a little bit. So that's kinda, so we keep going for all these things that impact our economy, which directly impacts what that money pool weight fund's gonna do. Here's probably the scariest slide that I had off tonight. So you see the red line. The red line is the trend, and if you go back to the far left-hand side of that screen, our fiscal nineteen ninety-five, that's the sales of used tax, so this is indicative of what proposal was put in effect in nineteen ninety-four. This is the revenue stream that funds majority of the school aid fund. You see the last three years on the far right side that are in the blue, look how much they're exceeding the trend. That's what I'm talking about. Consumer settlement is not following the indicators in the analysts. That gap there generates about two billion dollars. So if we go back to trend, that school aid fund's gonna drop from that nineteen billion back down to seventeen, sixteen. And that where we have some serious issues in school aid fund. So hopefully we stay with this anomaly that seems to be the new norm since COVID. And blue lines deep down, but the trend for twenty-some years is that red line. I think we'll probably return to it, probably in twenty-five, maybe twenty-six. I think we'll probably return to it, probably in twenty-five, maybe twenty-six, or at least it's starting to back down. Michigan revenue, how quick? Both income, tax, and the spending return to normal? At some point, things have to return to normal, we didn't say this for two years, so my crazy ball is worn out. We're trying to forecast the weather anymore, it's not being after it. You know, inflation is still a concern. I think it was last night, maybe it was earlier this morning, Treasury Secretary Yellen, she admitted publicly, she misread the inflation last year. Now that's huge. If you never pay attention to your economics class, just read that story, Google it, read it. That is huge for the sector, the Treasury Secretary to say, she misread the inflation a year ago. What her comments do is lead into the feds and the Fed policy and interest rates. So even though they're moving the interest rates up, a year too late is a year too late. You can't make up for that. So we're going to see inflation, the question is how bad is inflation to hit us? Some are predicting, once we hit it, twenty-three, twenty-four, maybe twenty-five, it's going to be as bad as not worse than two thousand twelve. That's a little scary for all of us to live for that.
Two thousand twelve or two thousand eight?
Well, two thousand eight, eight through twelve, eight through twelve, yes, thank you. But it lasted for us, four or five years, where the national one lasted about two years. Michigan again, I'll load, it lasted a lot longer. Why are we concerned? School aid fund is going to get killed if we go down that path. So I'm praying we don't go into inflationary and into a major recession. So we're waiting, hopefully in the next couple of weeks we see, but you'll see in the next week, I'll develop four fifty, seventy-one. The fiscal twenty-one, twenty-two, like I said, will have an operating deficit of about seven hundred thousand when it's all said and done. More likely when we finish that year, it'll probably be about break even. And the adopted budget, unless something comes up that surprises me in the next two weeks, we'll probably have one three to one five operating deficit. Now, that's at four fifty, if we get a little bit more than that, it'll lessen. And more than likely, some of those numbers will not hopefully hold over here, fuel, utilities and things like that. So I think Matt, we shared the last financial setups, it was a note that we shared, the energy audit and utilities that we'll get to try to lessen those operating costs for this very reason, try to help some of our budget guys. A lot very fast, but that's going to be short, less than a half hour. Nice job.
So this, you know, in my, in my time here, you know, the lateness at which we have solid information complicates this whole process because we're required to have a balanced budget approved by this board. Right, so next job, Mark's job, my job, particularly difficult. Now, one thing that we have done a lot successfully is our forecast, from both a student enrollment perspective, as to meaning all ends, Mark is referring to by the amount of those economic factors, and also really not gambling, but a qualified guess as to where that foundation allowance number comes out of the house, senate, in the governor's office. So, you know, nothing in our mind changes the process by which we go to that projection. But to Mark's point, we have really solid energy here in where that politics is going to shake out much sooner than we have this year. Now, the good, the good news, I think that worked extremely well, is that because there is a lot more revenue than anticipated, there isn't a pressure politically right now to cut and slash and take away. Because we always, always seem, when that school aid fund is healthy, right? It's often robbed by general fund shortfalls, colleges, universities, and there isn't that type of pressure that's exerting demands on that, that surplus threat. That's good for us, right, politically and financially that those pressures aren't there. So five years ago, we would never, ever, in a million years, think to say, well, of the three proposed budget, foundational allowance, we'll go with the highest one. We would never do that, right? But our projections, from an enrollment perspective, have been really spot on the last twelve, thirteen years. We feel good about it, it's just, you know, Mark makes a good point. You know, the settled contracts that commit beyond the current fiscal year to increases in wages, those surplus numbers that you see have already been.
Deadened, right?
Yeah.
But it's good news, and it's news that we've been waiting for for a long time, so it's good news. And with the election year, I think we will stay positive. I'd be shocked if we see what Matt just said, any negative in this election year. It should be positive, plus point for it. But time will tell, we will see where we're at.
It needs to be in the upper, upper numbers. Honestly, a lot of these things that are in their top five are critical. We don't do something about them now.
There is a lot there. Kim and I were, it was last Thursday, Kim, House Bill forty-three seventy-five, which is a bill that both the senate and house passed that changed the retirement system. Five of the states listening to school environment that were dying trying to get subs, they changed rules from years ago, it used to be a thirty-day waitlist, now it's a twelve-month waitlist. Now they're going to change it, have unrestricted earnings, go to a nine-month waitlist if the governor signs. It's good and bad, because it'll hurt districts, some districts in the short run, it'll help the system in the long run. But you can see the governor realizes the shortage of teachers, the shortage of quality people, and that we've got to start investing into the system to figure out how we start the next generation to follow suit. And so I think we will see some monies, I don't think it'll be as low as the senate, and I don't, I think it'll be closer to the house, where you're going to see some monies for student teacher, for, you know, teacher recruitment, there's an act there, GIL, Grow Your Own. So it's really an incentivized program to get districts to come up there. It doesn't have to be one shoe fits all, you figure out how you want to incentivize and develop and train the next generation, whatever it is, doesn't necessarily need to be principal, it could be lead teacher, it could be, well, parapro. So there is some exciting pieces in the detail. Like I said, you Google on for a long time because that budget, compared to this, is a hundred and twenty-five page small. So there's lots of detail to it. It's where they're going to settle with the politics in election year as to where are the big pieces? And we know foundational laws, but we want to see the pieces, definitely. The retirement system is finally getting some attention, as long needed. And the next wave is probably going to be changing. There's one thing now, we're not competitive in the marketplace right now with positions, and it doesn't matter. Pick it within school environment, we're not competitive, it's got to change. So I think they're starting to hear the school community that our concerns are deep, and our community's soft in one year, we got to start doing something about it. Other questions?
Thank you, Mark, for all of your hard work.
Thank you. Thanks for the last three couple of weeks.
Thanks, Mark.
Thanks.
Action items for this evening. First is consent grouping. We have the approval of minutes of May third, twenty twenty-two. Set the public hearing for budget for seven PM on June twenty-second, bundle twenty-two. Set organizational meeting for July eleventh, twenty twenty-two at eight AM, and Michigan Association of School Board memberships. Any consent grouping items anybody wish they had? Okay, you're in now.
I move that the reading of the minutes and policies be waived and the consent agenda items be approved as presented.
Sure.
Okay, I have a motion and a support. Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mr. Fagel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Mrs. LeVar?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam said aye. Motion carries. Next, we have probationary teacher resolution.
I move that the probationary teacher performance resolution be approved as presented. A second.
That's a motion and a support. Any discussion on the motion? You're in now, Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mr. Fagel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Luka?
Aye.
Mrs. LeVar?
Aye.
Mrs. Putnam said aye. Motion carries. Okay, that concludes our action items. Now I'll open up to any board member complications.
Leader Fund, you call funding, changed the format this year, so we did it so Matt would be there all day, and.
Don't even bother showing up, it's nineteen twenty, don't worry about it.
Yeah, so eight o'clock, we've got it filled right now, so we're looking to have a good time, it should be a lot of fun, so.
Well, if we're on our, we've got six teams, I think.
I don't know, do you have a team?
Thirteen.
I thought.
Eleven.
Okay, maybe thirteen. One of holes, people are not going to be there.
You're out there.
What are you giving away?
Um, very good bond information.
Bond card.
You hand out bond cards?
Yes, and hopefully we'll have a sign.
Hopefully we'll have a sign.
Jared, Jared, where's your sign?
I know, if it was in our order.
I, I, but I.
Saturday morning, yeah.
Asked him to go, so.
Jared, our member made a request of you, it's meant to be fulfilled.
He's going to do that.
Wow, he's CDM.
He just turned the mic off.
I just came from the girls' basketball meeting, we just met the head coach. So very passionate, very excited to get things started and rolling, that a lot of the girls, it was a very big turnout, so that was cool.
Oh, that's great, yes.
Yeah, very.
That's great, yes.
Mine, mine isn't as, as exciting as the last two, but just, you know, like I told most of you, we have four ballot proposals on the, the August ballot. For anybody, I know we have a huge audience here tonight, but for anybody that may be listening on YouTube, be an informed voter, it doesn't matter how you vote, just be an informed voter, please. So that's all that I have to say. Good talk.
I've had the pleasure of volunteering at Murphy's the last couple of weeks, just hanging out with kids and doing little things that parapros would normally do, but because again, because of the shortage, I've just been drawn to going there and spending my time there. Seeing these kids and giving them their hugs, and especially in light of what happened with the shooting massacre in Texas. It has just been such a comfort to me to see these kids, and they're still, they're just, they're looking to us as to model behavior and just to continue to show the love and the support to those kids. That's what we need to do, and to each other. I even, I walked into the building the day after the shooting, because I was there for the shooting, and then I went the next day too. And every staff member that I saw, we, we not a very big group, probably there were eight to ten of us at any given time, just loving on each other because everybody was just so devastated. And, you know, we knew what our job was, these kids are counting on us, so, okay, take a deep breath, we can do this, and then continue on on our day. And it's just, what, I mean, I, I know every elementary has their own community, but I've just been really blessed to have been a part of Murphy's for the last ten years with my children, being there. And this is my last year. When my kid does the wave out in two weeks, that's going to be my last child at Murphy's, but I still want to be there.
It's like you imagine, you're overly emotional about that.
I, I.
I think so, though wanting to come back, I think it's.
I think they're holding her tightly.
But it's just been wonderful to be able to volunteer again. That was one of the hardest things about Covid, was not being able to be in the building with the kids. The parent interaction, the help that the teachers so desperately need. I mean, even if parents go in to read to kids for an hour, that time is just so valuable and so helpful. And I'm very proud that I can do that, and I hope that the administration is just encouraging more and more volunteers to, to help out because we need them, and I just, it, it's so rewarding to me. So I just wanted to express my appreciation to Mr. Donnie and the staff at Murphy's allowing me in, and I know that there's some that, gosh, why is that? What's going on? And, and I heard that.
That was just me.
No, just, I, I've been enjoying observing, I've been enjoying helping with the kids, I've been enjoying just being there because I feel that I can't give as good of a, so, I mean, my words are, words fail, or, you know, but being there helps me to remember why I'm doing this. And to be able to spend that time with those kids, it just brings everything back into perspective, and what we are here for. And I know that everybody has very busy lives, but if there's anyone that can just donate an hour of that time, even a month, it would mean so much to those teachers and to those kids. To be able to see, oh, my mom, or my aunt, or my grandma, it's coming, their eyes just light up. So I just challenge people to remember those kids that are looking to us and model that wonderful behavior that we're supposed to be as adults.
Remember a shiny in your life.
Jared needs to make that during next commercial.
I'm all set.
You're all set. Just five seniors will be walking downtown on the ninth, the third, the day of the ninth. So it'd be great to see a lot of people out somewhere, and I'll turn on these soon.
That's it, yeah, lots, lots going on in the last couple of weeks here, it's always a fun time. Very funny that you mentioned about encouraging volunteerism. I had a lunch with a local community leader yesterday, and it was a very random request to meet. And the gentleman and I have looked at it for a long time, and in the community, and he just said, you know, I'm on my, my brain to talk to you about what, what is the school need? You're just telling me, my organization, other organizations, you know, what, what, what do you guys need? And I said, I need an army of volunteers, we need more adults that care about our kids, that are always helping our staff, picking up the slack, and, and we had a very, very weird conversation about what that plan might look like to get more people in our buildings, because we have to get creative. I mean, you, you can sit back, okay, here's a school disverbered business in America, and say, we just can't find people, we can't find people. But when you have folks that come to you and say, what do you need from me? That's my, it'll be my answer from now on, I just need more volunteers, more help. We got to figure out a direction, what, what are the jobs that we need in each building? If I show up on a Friday as a volunteer, I fill out my approval, and I got my badge, I'm ready to rock. What are the tasks that we need to get taken care of that day? And we, we need to build a system that they don't just show up, and the principal or secretary's like, well, we don't really have anything good to do today. Because we, so there's work to be done, it's not just easy to begin to show up and I need to do. We have to make sure it's purposeful and meaningful, and they have actual work, work to do, but that just re-energizes that, that's we. And I know our staff will support that. Brad, I really appreciate what you said, as board members, please encourage. There's so much effort put into, it's double-edged sword, great website with lots of information and all kinds of videos and visuals and information about the bond, but folks got to go there, right? It doesn't reach out and grab you. Jared's doing really a fantastic job pushing out that content, you've seen those videos, interviews with people who bond with that. But to Brad's point, we were spending a lot of time infusing a lot of misinformation out there about what this is or what it isn't, and if folks would just take a couple of minutes, and a lot of those questions are answered, but, you know, they may go to Facebook, not to look at our information, but to criticize prior to having the knowledge, being an informed voter is the best armor against that, so. Just as, as, I know you're all coming in, but for those watching, please just take, take ten minutes and just look at some easy to digest information, it's not volumes and volumes of, you know, boring project lists. It's, it's full of information, good videos, so. And I also think just in the, the wake of the Texas shooting, to remind the board that we have now completed all of our student, initial student trainings. So all of our staff, now all of our students have gone through at least the procedural talking points of what Alice is. We've done a lot down. of what Alice is, we've done a lockdown rule with that, with the new language, with the new procedures. A lot of planning will happen this summer about what those September Alice trainings look like for our buildings, when the kids come back. But just really pleased that that piece is taken care of. Our security cameras right now are being installed across the district, so those will be up and running, functioning, ready to go. And let's not forget that we've got almost four million dollars in this bond set aside for other district security, so the board approved, and we absorb out of the general fund the cost to do Alice training and those security cameras, right? We, we have, we have made that commitment, how we get our community to come, be us halfway, and give us some of those additional funds to, to really strengthen our, our building security. So I have, thank you, Madam President, I yield the balance of my time to you.
Thank you. With that.
Motion, Georgia.
Do I have a support?
Support.
Mrs. McCann?
Aye.
Mr. Heggel?
Aye.
Dr. Watson?
Aye.
Mr. Looka?
Aye.
Mrs. Levar?